All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Paul Ravlin. I'm a sergeant out of the St. Albans Barracks. I'm a patrol commander with an air-to-a-dayship supervisor. I've been in the St. Albans Barracks since February of this year. Prior to that, I was in Williston Barracks in Chittney County for 15 years. I'm on the bomb squad team. People ask me if it's busy. Well, I picked up two grenades today. I picked up a grenade last week. We guarded the vice president the weekend before that. So we're pretty busy with the bomb squad team. So I have fun. I get paid to do both things up. It's crazy that I get to do that. But that's it. So Lieutenant Parton sends his regards. He's in charge of a special team and they have training the next two days. So he asked me to come out and be a part of tonight's meeting. So I'm going to adjust my mask 100 times because it's going to fall down. It'll annoy you there. So since I've been in the St. Albans Barracks, I've talked to the troops about areas that we want to be more involved in. And Richford came up. And who? Put your hand up if you've been in these meetings before, just so I know. Everyone? Okay, great. So I'm the new guy here. So Richford came up as being an area that we need to spend more time with. And so I asked what was the problems and why do we need to focus on there? And some of the issues that you've already discussed had come up. So there's drug use. There's people in and out that don't live in the community, but they're causing problems in the community. And the proximity to Canada. Is there an issue with people trying to come across the border with illegal things that aren't necessarily residents here, but maybe they use it as a thoroughfare? Right? So all these things that we try to, that we want to make sure that we're on top of. And Lieutenant Parton was talking about this IBP initiative. He has done it in different areas of the state, as you've already been told. So we talked about, he says, Sergeant Ravlin, I want you to kind of be a big part of this. So I said, okay. And since then, I've been out here. I've done foot patrols out here myself and Trooper Farmer. Some of you may know her. We walked the streets for about 45 minutes. We handed out these cards. We'll talk about them in a second. If you haven't already known about them, but... We talked to some residents walking on the street. We talked to store owners, restaurant owners. We came in here. I talked to the town folks that were present. This is all during COVID, so there was a very limited amount of people available. And one of the things that I saw, and we talked about this a little bit in the back, was we talked to some folks that live here. And they were returning from a supervised visit, visiting one of their children. And we asked them about, hey, what's going on in the town? You know, how are things around here? Not anything specific about crime or drugs or anything like that. It was just, hey, how's the town? And they started talking about, well, you know, stuff goes on here. Well, like what? Oh, no, you know, I don't know. I don't want to get in trouble. I don't want to get in trouble. Okay, well, listen. If you find that there's information that you want us to know, here is a card. There's an email address on the card that you can email. And we'd be happy to have your information. 30 minutes later, I was, we had left. It takes me about a half an hour, 45 minutes to get back into this sales section over there. And I get a phone call from dispatch. Hey, we have a resident of Richford who's PO. So, okay, well, she wants to make a complaint on the troopers. Okay. Ma'am, what's the matter? Sergeant Ravlin. Well, there were some troopers out here and they're going around saying, I'm a rat and I'm giving out information. And I said, ma'am, I don't know your name. Well, they were here and I saw them talking so-and-so and I'm not a rat. I said, I was that trooper. I don't know who you are. I don't know the name of the person I was even talking to. And it was not about that. Trust me. Okay, well, I'm sorry. And that was it. And then just a few moments ago, I was sitting out here in my car, getting closer to the time of the meeting, and someone approached me and said, hey, just so you know, so-and-so is in town. Don't use my name. I'm not a rat. If they see me talking to you, I'm going to be called a rat. And off they walk. So that's what we have to overcome as state police. Everybody in town knows I'm here. I think there's a sign that I wrote over. At some point, it's set in the road. And boom, state police are in the road. So with that, we face some difficulties of proactive policing. Okay, we can drive through the road, on any road. If I turn around and come back through, it's a ghost town. So this is where we're trying to have the community help us solve any issues that the community may have. It's not the state police coming in and saying, you must do this, this, and this. It's where do we fit in the community's puzzle? Right? How do we make the community a whole? What piece of that puzzle do we fit into to help make that community a whole? And some of this came up. And I know we've talked about some of this stuff. And what I want to do is continue on some of the progress that Lieutenant Parton has already made with the group. You know, the essentials, I'm going to go over them again off the board for a second. What our goals are. I know it's sort of like an end game. Troopers specifically, we're driven towards a goal. Like if we are free-floating, we stop cars. But if we say, listen, we have a tremendous amount of speeders on the interstate. Troopers have a goal. Go loud, stop the speeders on the interstate. It's more directed. It's more rewarding in the end because you feel like you're accomplishing it. So we come up with goals for this IBP model. And first thing is create a safe and secure environment. First and foremost, we want to be comfortable in our town. I don't live here. I live in Chittney County. So I can patrol here during my shift and at 5:00, I go off-duty in another county altogether. The folks that live here have to continue on with their way of life. And if it involves crime or not a secure or safe environment, I can't do anything about that. I'm not, I don't have that buy-in to the community. I want to be a part of the community. It's part of my job. I want to help you out and make sure it's secure and safe and everything else. But I can only do that during my work hours. Right? So the ongoing efforts have to be continued by everybody. Promote and foster community relationships, partnerships with local, state, police, community leaders, organizations. So years ago, not that long ago, but two, three years ago, we started hearing groups across the country, really, about police interaction with them. And some of the stuff that came from that was how they're being policed. Okay? So admittedly, when I hear like, that person is telling me how they want to be policed, I'm like, what are you talking about? It's like telling my son, like him telling me how much cookies he can have. But then when I stop and think about it for a minute, I'm like, okay, this makes sense. If I drive into a town or a community and I'm immediately looked at as the bad guy, how can I have a positive impact in that community? Right? And I got to overcome a lot of things to do that. This uniform is hard to overcome. The initial image, shininess, right? We're all shiny. Shiny boots, we stand this way, you know? To overcome all that, that's a huge part of the beginning, part of the conversation. And it takes forever to get to any substance of a conversation we have. So that's why these types of meetings are important. So you understand that, one, I'm a human being that has a house, kids, and wife that lives in Vermont. And I too have issues in my neighborhood that we try to work to correct and make better. And so listening to people say, listen, this is how we want the police to be involved in our communities, became more and more of a bigger voice. And that's what we're learning. We're not pros at this. We're still learning. And even today, you can turn on your TV and realize how the police in the communities are trying to work better together. And not just the police coming in and saying, this is how you're going to do it. It's going to be like, hey, how can we together make this a better community? Reducing drug activity and violence. That kind of goes hand in hand a little bit. My career has led me down some paths that I didn't think I was going to go down. I wasn't a big drug guy, but I became a drug recognition expert. Then I became a Mert guy. I was flying around in the helicopters looking for the marijuana when it was illegal for two counties, in Cambridge County, 101 County. So somehow my career steered me that way. And I've seen how sometimes drug use, sales, trafficking can lead towards violence. And reducing that by default will reduce the violence, reducing the drug use. Positive and effective youth and parental programs. One of my days sitting out here, sitting out here in the fire department parking lot, I see two boys walk across. They go up to the store here. They're coming back across. I roll down my window. Hey, fellas, what are you up to? We're going fishing down at the river. What do you catch down there? And we had like a 15, 20-minute conversation about fishing and being out of school and COVID, nearly young boys. And, hey, all right, fellas, be safe down there. Good luck catching fish. So that interaction for me is important because I can't tell you how many phone calls I received from parents. My son's not going to school. I need you to come and get him to school. Okay? Or I've been to a house and we're dealing with something and the mom says, yep, I told her if she doesn't eat her beans, I'm calling the police.
At least you have calls, really.
Right? So there I am, the person that gets called when they don't eat their beans. So how do I overcome that later on in a society? How do I overcome that if I'm being called because she's not eating her beans or I'm being called because she's not going to school? So our positive interaction with the youth is very, very important. We need to do that early on and not be the ones that show up. Admittedly, I've arrested parents and the children are present. Okay? That's terrible. I got two boys of my own. Okay? And when I'm pulling one of the parents out of the home, that child sees that. That child loves that parent. But I am the one removing that parent from the house. How can I overcome that? Very, very difficult, right? So it's important that we start this early on. The unity of efforts is essential. If we're not all running the same direction and we're all trying to get to the same goal, we're never going to get there. Okay? We all have to be inclusive with what our goals are. And generating intelligence by going through the community. Like I said, in a couple hours, I'll be at my house in Chittney County and I'll be dealing with issues in my community. You folks here know who lives where, know where there may be trouble spots, know where we should better put our efforts. And that doesn't always mean our enforcement. It doesn't mean the state police come in and kick the door in on the house. What it means is maybe we find some other resources that are available to us and get those resources out to them. Maybe it's a financial issue. Maybe it's a food issue. Maybe it's a can't pay the heating bill issue. Okay? And these sometimes lead to other crimes. Someone that can't pay the rent or buy food or pay their heating bill may engage in criminal activity to get money to do such things. They may. They may not, but they may. So if we, if the person that can't pay their rent is committing a crime to pay their rent and I come in and arrest that person, how does that put me? Right? A person trying to pay their rent or trying to get food or trying to pay their car insurance because the next time they get pulled over, the car is going to get towed because it doesn't have insurance. Because I can't let a car go without insurance. If I do, go down the road and hit the car, I'm derelict to my job. So they don't have insurance on their car. Go down the road, they get pulled over for a plate light or they're speeding or something. And I see they don't have insurance, I got to tow them. I can't let them drive away. Buy a tow bill. So now where are they at? Got to pay a tow bill, right? Keep snowballing and snowballing. So if they, if they committed a crime to get that money to pay the insurance or the ticket so they don't lose their license, then, and all I needed was rent money, right? To go back to the source. Maybe it was just money for food. Who knows? So if we don't have better community input, knowing who's in our community, knowing who needs the resources, there's a probability that it could come across with law enforcement where action has to be taken and it just keep perpetuating it to me. It keep perpetuating this cycle. Does that make sense to everybody? Right? So out of all that, we want to be better community members with you. While I don't live here, when I'm on duty, I'm a part of this community. And one piece of that puzzle, I'm a part of this community. So progress on this intelligence-based policing. I know when I said intelligence-based policing, when you first hear it, it could be like an illiterate, right? Police are using like acronyms. Anybody in the service? I was in the Marine Corps. Okay? Everything's an acronym. You can have a full conversation and not use a real word. Right? So police do the same thing. IBP, intelligence-based policing. Could be informational-based policing. So it doesn't sound so bad. But it's the same thing. We're trying to get community members to aid in all issues that the community may need. Okay? Part of that would be criminal activity. Reducing criminal activity. That's the piece of the puzzle that we can aid in. Okay? If there's someone that needs heating assistance, food assistance, we can reach out to people that are available to give them those things. That's who they would be part of to take care of. So in speaking with Lieutenant Parton, what we wanted to see was a growth from this group. Folks that are here that have the interest in making the community better, the vested members of the community, the stakeholders, you folks, business owners, residents, elected officials, everywhere that's part of this community, we'd like to see this kind of turn into a self-sustaining program that we can see, we can then ask, where do we fit into your model? Okay, that's what we want. We don't want to drive the bus, but we want to be a passenger on it so that when we're needed, we know where we stand in it, we know what we can do, and you have the trust in us that we can all work together. Does that make sense to everybody? And like I said, I drive in here and it was like a movie, okay? It's going over, it's like... This person, he just says, I'm talking about a rat. Walks away. Okay? And that's how it goes. Like that's, that's how we get information in a big shiny green car with lights on it, shiny uniform. That's how we get it, right? I'm not a rat. And they take off. So the information is probably good. I got troopers looking into it. Okay? But that's, that's how we, that's our involvement with the community right now. Okay? Meeting out there, talking to folks about the day, their visit with their children. And half an hour later, I'm getting complaints. They're rats! Everyone's a rat! You know? So how can we overcome some of these things and work better? Are there folks in here that want to be like a scribe? Someone that can record what the group has decided they want to do, goals that we want? Someone that can take notes? That way, the following week, we can say, all right, we discussed this, this, and this. And this is our goals and plans. Anybody who wants to do that? You don't have to raise your hand. You do? Perfect. That's awesome. Things like that, it's people, right? What's your name, sir?
Andy.
Andy. Okay, so if we can...
Thank you.
Yep, we had already set up that. We've got for it. Put mine in, Sicker. No, really, seriously, no. It starts with, it starts with that, right? Andy's taking notes. Okay? Then folks are going to start saying, well, listen, here's what I see over here. Here's what I see over there. Then we need people to say, well, here, I know someone that can go and help there. I know someone that can go and help there. I can help over there. Stuff leads to, it's just like the snowball in the mountain, right? One little snowflake at the top, by the time you get to the bottom, it's an avalanche. Right? That's what we're trying to do here. That's what we're trying to be a part of. Eventually, we're not going to be the ones up here talking. We're going to hear from the stakeholders, the community members. Okay? That's what we'd like to see. Are we off-base there? Does anybody have a different idea? Like, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to tell you this is what we're going to do. I need back and forth, so... Does anybody see an issue with that or concerns about that? Okay. So where are we, where are we with your vision of what a safe and secure environment is? Have we thought about that, really?
Last week, we had talked about it. And one, one thing that was mentioned a few different times was people drinking, walking up and down the street.
Yep.
Made people feel a little bit uncomfortable.
Okay.
You know, walking by somebody that might be sitting there drinking whatever, alcohol, any type of alcohol.
Okay.
I think that was mentioned, that was mentioned a couple times last week.
What is the feeling about being able to go out your front door at night and go for a walk somewhere on the street, to the park, or wherever?
No, we're not going to do it.
Not going to do it?
No.
Okay.
I do it. That doesn't bother me.
So when I say that, when I ask that question, there's a immediate response, not going to do it. What's the first thing that comes to your mind?
That it's not safe.
Not safe, why?
Because you don't know who's going to be out there and what they're going to want.
Okay, are you worried about, are you worried about a personal injury? Personal crime?
Robbery.
Robbery? Okay. Is that what it is? Personal crime?
I think children, parents were concerned about possibly, you know, maybe not the parent being so afraid, but afraid to let your children just, you know, whatever time of day, walk from point A to point B without, you know, at least having something in the back of your mind wondering, well, you know, are they safe or, you know? I think they will be, but, you know, the thoughts there.
Yep.
We just, we just don't know the people that are here anymore.
Sure.
You know, unfortunately, they send them up from Chittney County up here due to COVID is what we're being told. I'm not 100% convinced of that, but...
Okay. Yeah, I know, I don't know. I know there was some conversations in past meetings about placements and stuff. I really don't know the protocol and what that, what happened there. What I can say is I know that there was, there was placements around the state for certain things, but I don't know specifics to Richford or how Vermont, the state of Vermont responded to that. I don't, so I can't answer that question, but I do know that that was brought up in the meetings prior.
Now, as we were doing these meetings, we had talked in the first one that I joined anyway, that you guys were going to get tips from the Richford people. And did you have any last week, you know?
So the last, so we have this information, we have this web information email that's been talked about. You guys know about that? The last email I received, I just checked it before I came up here. The last, well, check that. I checked it at about 3:15. And the last email was September 3rd or 6th?
September 6th.
3rd or 6th?
Okay.
And it was about the meeting.
Okay.
Okay? There was a couple before that about some cows that are having some issues that look like they may be in poor health. And we have a trooper looking into that, the agency of agriculture. So it comes to livestock. So those are the ones that I saw on the email. Were three or four on those because we were doing a back and forth with the sender. And the other one was about the meeting. Yes?
I had someone had said something to me and, I mean, maybe the best thing to do would be go and just make sure that they're doing it the right way. But they said that they tried emailing two or three times and it would come back to them saying couldn't, couldn't be delivered, something along those lines.
Yep. Might have been an address thing because again, I had, I tested it just to see because again, it'd been a while since we received one. So I had the sergeant sit next to me. I was like, send me an email to this. And he wrote test. And it went right, it came right through, popped right up. So it could have been an address thing or maybe a system at that, system issue at that time, but yes. Sir.
I forgot your name again.
Paul.
Paul, sorry. You said you patrol here every now and again?
Yep.
When was the last time?
Me specifically?
Yeah.
Um, I'd say it's probably been close about seven days.
Seven days?
Yep, me.
Did you issue a ticket in that time period?
I did not, no. I don't, I don't issue many tickets in my position right now as a supervisor.
So if you're sitting out here and you see a car go by with a, not registered car...
Oh, if I see a violation, then I'll, then I'll pull it over. But my, my issuing of tickets is pretty low.
Why?
But if, just due to other requirements that I do, I'm very, I'm here and there and everywhere. So if we have a trooper that's issued to the east patrol and they're here and they're writing tickets, if I'm out here and I see a violation, by all means, and I will run plates all day. When I leave here, if I sit here for an hour at the fire department, I've got a list of license plates that I have run for violations such as that. If I see one, I'll pull it over. I will. But my primary job isn't to go out and hunt for traffic or hunt for tracks. So, but yes, I will issue a violation. I have not written a ticket here in Richford.
They had mentioned to us, this summer, we had quite a bit of issues with, we opened our roads up for ATVs.
Yes.
And it was a period of time for a couple months that was a little hectic.
Yep.
That was one of the things that I think maybe the first or second meeting that was discussed. And the troopers kind of said that they, they couldn't really enforce that because it was kind of, it was more of a town ordinance than a state ordinance.
Yep.
But we had suggested like, you know, hey, if you see an issue, you know, even someone drinking, walking up and down the street, apparently that was another thing that was, well, it's more of a town ordinance thing versus a state, a state law. But I don't see the harm in just stopping and saying, hey, listen, you can't drink on the street, like dump it out. Like you don't necessarily have to take a ticket book out and write in a ticket.
Yep.
And in the last week or so, I've kind of seen that, like they had, there was a state cop that had an ATV pulled over.
Yeah, trooper carrier, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know if...
Yeah, so two things on that. So one, we don't have a public intoxication law per se. We have a disorderly conduct law.
Right.
So walking down the road, drinking a beer technically isn't a law that we can enforce. Now, we can go up to the person and be like, hey, come back, come over here and talk to me.
We have a town ordinance saying that, you know, you got it.
So state, right? So we're, so, yeah, we'll, we'll get to, we'll wrap it all up. So the, so if I go up to somebody just walking on the street, you can walk down the street and I'll be like, hey, it's Jeff, right?
Andy.
Andy. Hey, Andy, come here. And you're like, beat it, pal. And you keep walking. There's no way that I can stop you. Like that's, you have a right to just walk down the street if you want. Not committing a crime, legally for me to detain you, I'd have to have like reasonable suspicion that you're part of a crime or probable cause that a crime has been committed.
Right.
So you have a right to just walk down the street and do what you want. So short of not having a law violation, I can't stop you from walking down the street. So we want to get out and engage the folks. And that's why we did the foot patrol, right? See what we see. We don't know what we don't know until we get out there. The ATV piece, so we were getting called about ATVs. And so I requested a copy of the town ordinance. And then what I did was I read the roads, I had the map, and I highlighted the town map with the roads that were authorized to have an ATV. And I don't know for 100% certainty because I don't have any in front of me now, but there was like one or two roads that were off the beat path that didn't have, and they may have been new roads since the town map had been created, but they weren't allowed to have ATVs. And the other piece was, can they not be on 105? And a part of that was, you can't be on a state highway without prior approval from AOT, even with a town ordinance.
And we haven't got that yet because of COVID.
And then they have to be a part of the club and they have to have insurance. A whole thing just came out about ATVs and side-by-sides and motor-driven vehicle, motor-driven utility vehicles, I think they call it now. I guess that includes the side-by-sides. So we put the word out to the troops. Listen, if I come out here and they have, we had some complaints about ATVs here on 105. So we watch. The person's in a side-by-side, they have their seatbelt on, they come from the gas station, they go down the road, they stop at the stop sign, the car goes by, the ATV takes a right and goes up the hill. So we're like, okay. So we go over, that person was, so I put a word out to the troops. I put a question mark, who is this? And that's the person that was stopped the other day. And that's the person that was stopped the other day. Trooper found that person, they introduced themselves, they're part of a club, they have insurance, he's wearing a seatbelt. So my instructions to the troops, in conjunction with Lieutenant Parkin, was if we come in here, gangbusters, to all ready ATV riders, says, you can't, you can't, you can't. The chances of me catching them are gonna be, it's a roll, it's a roll of dice. If I'm gonna be here and they're gonna stop for me and everything else. But if we come in here with an education piece, hey, listen, I know you're out here driving your ATV, whether or not this is an authorized piece, part of the road or not, but you need to have insurance, you need to have a helmet, you need to have your seatbelt, get a side by side. The education piece goes a lot longer, a lot further than me coming in, wheels squealing, tickets flying. If they even stop. So what we're, our goal is, we identified who that person was, he gave us a tremendous amount of information. It was a back and forth information, we're not coming out here that we knew all the answers, but it was a back and forth that we had with this gentleman, him saying, listen, we have a club out here and a lot of people are part of that club. Oh, great, when he wins a club meetings, can we come to that? Then we start reaching out to a bigger part of the community, the folks that are driving the ATVs, and we can get everyone on the same page. It's, it's, it goes all the way back down to all of us having to buy into the same community goals. So.
I just thought it was great to see that.
Yeah.
You know, at least, um, so what if you can't write him a ticket? Pull him over and just say, hey.
Yeah, that was a great conversation, Trooper Carrier had with the gentleman. And it's all based on this type of stuff. We had, we had calls in saying, these ATVs are driving on the road. Okay, it didn't go on death years. Hey, call the town, can you send us the ordinance? We wanna know for certain right now what the ordinance is. I get it faxed to me, highlighted all the roads, I got the map on my desk though, I didn't believe I didn't grab it. But it's there, so.
And we're putting, uh, just so you know, in the next two, maybe three weeks, every road that's not legal is gonna be marked with a, a twelve by eighteen sign saying that the ATVs are prohibited by town ordinance. So it'll be on every street.
Yeah.
In the town that's not part of the ordinance. So it makes it just easier for everyone, including police, to know.
Huge piece is education.
Yeah.
Huge piece is education. And a big part of my, big part of my job, that's what a lot of this is. Some folks have questions, we have questions. And town ordinance is get us screwed sometimes, I'll tell you. Because for us to understand each town ordinance, every town that we cover, sometimes it changes, we don't know. So we have to ask for them, and we gotta, we gotta educate ourselves on how we can better enforce it or make sure that it's being enforced properly, right? That, that's, or make sure that it's written properly and people are buying by it. So. Um, how do, be honest, you're not gonna hurt my feelings. What, how, what is your feelings on the state police as a whole? Here, here, here in Franklin County, Richford? Do you feel like we can be, do you feel like we can be partners? Say again?
I feel you're understaffed and underfunded.
Oh man, we're getting down the path, I can't go down that path.
I understand that. Word out for TV land, because how I understand limitations, because of staffing and funds that are available and, and the uniqueness of a largely rural state.
Sure, yeah, there's that, I mean, that's, I, I, you could ask, any, hey, everyone can raise their hand and say we're understaffed, right? A lot of people can do that. So, we've discussed about troopers and numbers and the numbers at the barracks and all that stuff, and I know that's been discussed in previous meetings. So part, a big part of this is how we can better utilize the resources that we have. So we have what we have, and we would like to make sure that those are being utilized the most logical way. So I hear that, I hear that the feeling is that we're understaffed. What else, what else is it like?
Underfunded.
Underfunded, okay. Ma'am?
I'm supportive.
Supportive, okay.
I hear a lot of, um, well, I saw the policeman sitting there, but he didn't do anything.
Okay.
I hear a lot of that around town. And maybe it's like you, you're not set up to stop the cars, but we see this car, you know, doing something, and then you're sitting there, we think that you're.
Yep, yep, okay.
I think it's kind of what you said before, it's like, um, when you're not here, there are things that are happening, like where are you now? You know?
Sure.
That's, that's, that's the problem, like, you know?
I, I.
If you're here on a Sunday morning when everybody is like, um, not everybody's going to church now, but, um, you know, it doesn't do anything to, um, enforce anything.
Yes, yep. Anybody else?
How many state police cars is there for Franklin County?
Our, our barracks allotted twenty-two troopers. And I think we have, um, one vacancy right now, maybe two vacancies. Um, from that, you have four sergeants. Um, so I'm a supervisor, so what I, I'm a firm believer, comes from the Marine Corps years to now, I can't supervise from behind a desk, I can't, I can't do it, right? So I gotta be out in the, in the field. So if I have a trooper that's covering East Patrol, which is Richford, Ennisburg, Montgomery, Franklin, that trooper is covering that area, right? So they get a call that's silver to Ennisburg, I'll shoot over there and help them out, they need help. If it's a call that needs a couple of troopers, right? Or I'll just be there. Sometimes I show up on the third wheel and I'm putting cones out or I'm taking pictures, right? That's why I've been, that's, you know, you think, you get your strike, it's fresh on your shoulder, that's fabulous, you can't have to be the cone person or the photograph guy, but, but that's it, right? I'm supervising from the field. So that's why I'm sitting there, and I may leave in a minute to go somewhere else. I may go all the way to Hightate or, or to the islands, if that's where we're over, we had a call over there. That day that I was sitting here talking to the boys about fishing, we had a call way over in the swamp and that needed my attention. So I gotta go shoot way over there, and that, that dictates where I go. So twenty, twenty-two at the barracks, four, a couple vacancies, four of those are sergeants, and those have to cover four shifts. We have two day shift lines and two night shift lines, right? So on a day shift, we may have three troopers and a sergeant. On a heavy day, we may have five troopers and a sergeant, six troopers and a sergeant. Um, that encompasses trainings that they have to go to, that encompasses leave that they're allotted, that encompasses a lot of things. So, um, we often ask troopers from other barracks to come up and cover shifts for us. Uh, we're, we're dealing with that now. We had a trooper from Derby, came over this past weekend, he had a call, we had to shift that case to another trooper. Um, now that he's like, he came for one day, and he caught a case that needs to last, um, so.
Is there any problems with the, uh, radio service in the area?
Some, some spaces it's spotty.
Really?
Yep, some spaces it's spotty, but, you know, it's, that's the nature of policing in a rural state. Someone else brought that up and that's, that's what it is. It's, I don't think I've, my portable has a little bit less of a, of a reach than my, uh, car, but my car, it's not, I, I don't have, I had a dead spot per se.
Which man has a personal radio in the tire radio?
Yep, yep, yep. So my car is set up with a repeater, so my portable can go to my car, my car will act as my power source, I can get out from there, so. So what do we want to see from this group? What, what is our goal? We want to be able to walk the street at night, safe?
Yeah, I understand and a question.
Yes.
Um, when we were talking about the men that walk around drinking?
Yes.
Okay, they're not only drinking, sometimes they're actually gawking at the women that walk by and kind of talking low enough so you don't really know what they're saying.
Mm-hmm.
But they're just being a nuisance. So what, what are you women supposed to do? Stay home or take a different route to the, to the store? Or bring a baseball bat with us, or what do you want us to do? I've actually seen a man peeing, you know, across the road there in back of the building.
That's a, that's a time like he, like he, he definitely come for that, he can't be here anything outside.
Well, he was one, he was drinking and.
Do you know who this, do you know where he is? Do you know who this man is?
No, I mean, they all look alike, they never wash up and they have beers and, you know, their, their clothes look like they're, I mean, ragged and.
Hey, that is why, I'm not gonna be telling you that, that's, that's not in your shirt, right? Those, that's not what your feelings.
You know, we get sick of that.
Sure.
And you don't know what's on their mind, you don't know if they're playing with a cold deck or what. In fact, one of my sons was coming up Tuesday to have lunch with me, and he mentioned to one of his professional friends that he was going up to Richford to have lunch with his mom. His friend said, your mother lives in Richford? That's the old, the state is making Richford the old water bear. Now, I don't know if you know what water bear is, but it was our state institution, one of the mentally ill.
Yes.
Now, isn't that kind of a slap in the face to have people from outside think that if you live in Richford, you're, you're living in a... And my other question was, him, is there any way that Richford can stop somebody from coming in that the state wants to place here, say like a sexual offender or something? Do we have the power to say, no, we're not gonna house them?
You know, I, that, um, so two parts, you have, you have two statements, um. Your, your, your opinion about Richford becoming the old water bear?
Yeah.
Those are your, those are your concerns about people being placed here to, due to COVID, the state is placing them here. Again, I'm not versed in that, I don't know who's been here and replaced here, but if that's your concern, can I stop the state from doing it? I, I don't know all that, I don't know those answers. I don't know those answers for you, I'm sorry.
Our state rep, maybe I should call?
Certainly, yeah, that's something that you can have a conversation with. Because what I, what, what my role is, is assisting folks that are here. How they got here and why they're here, that's, that's outside my favor.
It seems like we've just got too many of them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in a short span of time.
Okay, yeah, I, I, again, I wouldn't know that per se myself.
Well, back to my original question there.
Sure.
What can a woman do who's trying to go get her shopping done and you've got men maiming around?
Yeah, so I, so I asked the question, who are they, where do they live? And you said, I have no clue.
I think they live down on River Street there in those apartments.
Okay.
That's where they obviously seem to be walking.
Walking in that direction, right? So it goes back to this gentleman's statement earlier on, right? We don't know our community. We don't know who's in our community, right? And Richford, I don't know how, what's the population of Richford?
About twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred people? How many, how many have been in Richford for a while? When did you stop knowing who was in the town? And it's like, oh, that, because I, I'll tell you, where I live, I can give directions to somebody where, where that car crashed into that tree and it fell in the road. That big tree on the corner, remember when it fell into the road? Yep, take it right right there. I can give directions to somebody like that. When did that, when?
I think we talked, at our last meeting, we, we kind of touched base on this a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, it, it seems like the people, the people in Richford, we're, we're talking about generations at the last meeting. Like, when I was a kid, I knew, it's like you knew everybody, right? And if you hung out with a kid and that kid was maybe going down a bad road.
Yeah.
Well, your mom and dad.
They would square him away.
Well, or, or your mom and dad would call their mom and dad and say, hey, listen, you know, like, I mean, I saw it, I did it. I was one of those kids.
Yeah.
And you, and you, it's like that's gone, like, you know? There was generational, like, last names of people, like you can, you can just name them off of people who've been here in Richford for a hundred years.
Sure.
And then I don't know when it changed, but it did change. If it's been five years, if it's been eight years, um, it's like you start seeing people that you never saw before. And, you know, their, their grandparents or their mom and dad may not be here, you know what I mean? They're, they're somewheres else, because maybe they sent their kids here because they don't wanna hang out with them. I don't know.
Yeah.
But it seems to be the, that, that really seems to be the root of the issue is the generational people who care about Richford.
Okay.
And care about the community are no longer, you know, like that generation is, is fading away and a different generation is coming in.
Okay.
And it feels like those people are taking our community over, and I don't think we should let them.
Okay.
You know, and.
I'm sorry, do you have a question?
I, I'd say probably ten to fifteen years.
Okay.
And I think that long ago, we knew where to see this place, sort of been full of a meeting like this, I think.
Yeah.
Back then.
Okay. So how do we get back there?
Don't know, we're begging for help.
Yep. Yeah, how do we get back to knowing who's, who lives in the blue house on the corner and who lives in the red car?
Section eight come back.
Pardon me?
Stuff letting section eight go here.
Okay.
I know, I mean, it's not you.
Yep, yep.
That's the big.
No, I mean, this is, this is the stuff that we need to hear, right? So we need, we have, we have things that we perceive.
We didn't have that section two or stuff.
We have, we have issues that we perceive as being problems. Okay, and then we have to figure out how we can address them. So if one of the issues that we see is that we think people are being funneled in in a low income status, okay?
Yeah, I don't think it's just that, to be honest, I don't think it's just section eight.
Okay.
Section eight, we've always had low income people in town.
Sure.
Fifteen years ago, we had a woman at the property?
No, but that's the problem. We got a motel turned into apartments, rental apartments for families and pedophiles all staying in the same area.
Okay.
That had been funneled in, that's the problem.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Because I'll, I'll tell you that.
Section eight's not the problem, because we do have section eight, we've had section eight here for many years. But at the same time, those people still have respect, everybody, those people, us people, everybody has respect. If one has respect for who they are and what their children are doing.
Yep.
The problem is is these others that are being funneled in don't.
Okay.
They don't care about the community.
Okay, so that's good, so now we're determining that, we don't wanna lump them all together as one, one thing, right? So, section eight, and I get your frustration, okay? Um, so we're not gonna list, they're not gonna list them as low income folks that need assistance from the state. They get section eight, wick or whatever they can, whatever they get, right? So we're gonna start narrowing that group down a little bit more. So it's not all section eight, folks. Where else are we, so let's get that group a little bit more narrowed. What is, then tell me, tell me what else, give you some more descriptive factor of what's that group? Still in that group? So I, I know what you're thinking, because you're, I see it, right? So thick, I'm gonna come back to you.
So, I, I'm not gonna refer to it as, as section eight, but, um, you know, whatever. I could be not speaking politically by saying this, but I gotta think about how to say it. So, if, if you, if you rent a home.
Yep.
It doesn't mean that you don't have pride for your community.
Of course.
Like, that, that is.
Right.
That, that's totally wrong, but it seems like the vast majority of the people who are, you know, maybe might move here for a year and then they leave.
Okay.
And then someone else comes and, and takes their spot in their apartment.
Okay.
You know, the people that have lived here their whole life, it doesn't matter if you own a house or you rent or whatever, you pay taxes and you don't pay taxes.
Okay.
But these people, that, that seems to be the majority of the people who don't have any respect for their community because they don't care.
They're not, they don't have, they're not invested.
They, they have, they have no vested interest.
Okay, so we feel that high turnover residencies cause a less interest in the, in the longevity of the community.
Yeah, you, you could rent a house and, 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 and live here your whole entire life.
Yep.
And this is your community, this is your home, it's what you call home.
So we went from people that need public assistance.
Yeah.
To folks that don't have a vested interest in the community due to the high turnover of where they're living.
I didn't tell.
Is that, is that, a little bit more, is that, ma'am? Is that what we're thinking? I don't wanna put words in your mouth.
No, that's exactly.
And I think, I wish we could find out factually, um, you know, like, well, Sherry said, she doesn't, maybe doesn't think that, and I, I get her, her point, but I wonder fifteen years ago, how many homes in Richford, or, well, how many apartment buildings there was in Richford fifteen years ago versus how many apartment buildings there are today?
Okay.
And I bet you the number's doubled. Because there's been a lot of homes, there's a lot of homes in this community where generational people might have lived in that home, okay?
Yeah.
And they, their, their children went to school here, there wasn't really anything for them. So they went to college and they said, you know what, I love my hometown, but I'm not going back there, there's nothing for me. So I'm gonna go and live in Burlington, or I might go to Florida, who knows where they went?
Sure.
But their mom and dad stayed here because this is where they, this is where they were raised.
Yes.
Okay, they passed away, or they got old and they had to go to a nursing home or whatever, but that home got sold. And at the time, the real estate market in Richford was pretty, it, it, it wasn't great, okay? And at the time, the real estate market in Richford was pretty, it, it, it wasn't great, okay? After nine eleven, everything kinda went downhill. So there's a lot of homes that got sold very, very cheap. And those that used to be homes are now rental units.
Okay.
And I, I really think the amount of rental units in this town, if I, if I set a number, I, I feel like, you know, whatever, someone's gonna hold me to it.
Sure, I know. I get that a lot, believe me, I know what you're saying.
It's a very, very high, high number.
Yeah.
And, and all those rental units are, again, I'm not gonna say a number, but the vast majority of them are owned by five people.
Okay.
Well, I think that's been touched on before and kind of get into this is a large number of properties operated by landlords where they're not invested in the community.
Correct.
They don't have any pride in regards to the way they maintain or upkeep their property.
So I, I have my fingers crossed, I can remember this question I gotta ask that you brought up, so it's, I'm gonna ask it right now. How many folks here own property here that they're renting in Richford?
Say again, how many folks?
How many folks own property here?
It's a renting.
Own property? Own property?
That they're renting out.
That they're renting out. How many landlords do I have?
We just have one property.
Okay.
They're renting it to somebody that.
Landlord, okay. So, if I'm gathering, if I'm tracking properly, I'm not putting words in your mouth. This is, this is just to get conversation started. We feel that there may be an influx of non-invested community members, either landlords or tenants, that's been bigger than it ever has been in Richford.
Correct.
Okay?
And the number seems to keep going.
Okay, so I have two in this meeting right now. Okay, so it's probably a disproportionate represented number here, I'm guessing.
Very.
Yeah.
But the ones vested in the community.
The ones vested in the community are here. So what if, I'll get you, yeah, yeah, what if next Thursday, half of you or maybe all of you bring in a landlord? Good luck.
We tried, we tried in the past. We tried.
So what was the response to that? What, what was said? We said.
Thanks for letting me know.
Yeah, please, I know.
Thanks for letting me know?
So we, we had a meeting, um, again, I, 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 I don't remember what the meeting was for.
Yeah.
I feel like it was, um, give me this a second, I got a thing.
Can I let you think? I got, I got a question over here.
No, I got it.
You got it. So, go Andy, man, you're next.
So somehow, some way, I don't remember how it all got started, um, we had, um, TJ Donovan.
Yeah.
Came here.
Okay.
Um, he met with, well, it was open to the public, but I think maybe, maybe ten people went.
Okay.
And we, we met that morning and, um, did the same thing, kinda laid out some things of what we thought was going on in Richford. And every, every person who went to the meeting, um, I'm not gonna say every person, but most of the people who went to the meeting have brought up the same thing that's being brought up here tonight.
Okay.
And he said, okay, I'm gonna go back to Montpelier and I'm gonna give you some, some resources.
Okay.
And a hundred percent did. He, he had said, you know, so anyways, long story short, we had a meeting, those people who were the resources came here and they talked about HUD housing and they talked about grants, uh, to, to refab some of the housing that's here.
Okay.
It was a long, long, long meeting. And again, in that meeting, more of the same talk came out.
Okay.
And there was one particular landlord that was here. Actually didn't come in the room, stood, stood out there on the stairway so they could hear what everybody was saying. And then right at the end, kind of got like, oh God, they saw me. Then came in here and like, really kind of sounded like a fool, but um, was basically at that point saying, well, all these people that we rent our houses to, they're great people. Um, they'll help you out, you know, and it's, I think it, you have to just, I, I, I don't know. I don't know how you get that point across it. I don't think everybody's saying that everyone who rents a house are bad people. But that's instantly what they think. They go on the defense mode. And it's like, no, let's, let's not try to figure out the problem. Let's just say, there's absolutely nothing wrong with what we're doing and we're gonna continue doing what we're doing.
Right.
And that, so it has, they have, you know, been invited to come, that's for sure.
I have a response for that, but I gotta get to this question right here. Or say, whatever, whatever you ask, let's ask.
I, um, I know Richford has ordinances and I know Richford has a health officer. And what I'd like to know, and this health officer sits on the select board and this health officer, I believe, wears a number of hats and tries to wear more hats that don't belong to her.
Okay.
I'd like to know why she doesn't visit these places, picture these places, um, that are not following the ordinances in Richford.
Okay.
And then I'd like to know.
You get this, Andy?
Uh, I'm ready to go.
You go on, I like it.
Then I'd like to know, um, why, if it's sent to the state, why doesn't the state jump in now that they know there are children living next door to a pedophile? Or pedophiles? And why are these children being in apartments, um, that aren't safe? If, if that's the case, if it boils down to slum lords here, um, why doesn't our health officer get off her dust and do something about it? Is she afraid to go into these places? What's the problem with that?
You said it whole, ultimately, and I probably would've, but that's good. I like, you're, you're pretty thoughtful about it and I like it, okay? And you're, you're voicing your opinion, I, I like that, okay? We need to have people heard, okay? But when it comes back, that, and this is a, this is great right here. This is where you folks are gonna start this avalanche of the top with this snowflake, okay? There's town select meetings, I'm guessing?
Yep.
Do you attend those? Okay, are these concerns voiced at the town select board meeting?
I'm the chair of the select board.
Okay, are they, are these, are these same things you're hearing here heard at the select board meeting?
Um.
They're going to be, not really.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe just, I don't know how to say this, but I'll, I, I, I encourage people to come to select board meetings, okay?
Yep.
We follow open meeting law, we take minutes, we, you know, I, anyone who wants to come, more power to you.
Okay.
Um, most of the time, people won't come.
Okay.
Um, they, everyone's busy, they don't have enough time.
Sure.
So I feel like as being on the select board, that's why I'm trying to do this, is I feel like everything's on my lap and, you know, the five board members, everything's your job. You take care of it for the community. I'm only one person. I can, I can vote and I can make a, a smart choice for the town and put the town in the right direction, but I can't fix Richford by myself.
Okay.
And, and a lot of people, um, a lot of people won't come to a select board meeting because they don't wanna be on video. They're afraid to say what they wanna say in, in, in front of the public because there's a camera pointed on them.
Okay.
And we've, we've gone down that path, we're trying to remove that and you can't.
Yeah.
It's open meeting, you can, it's, it's allowed to be videoed, which, which is fine, but it's kind of a hinder in a way. Um, for these meetings, it's great because I know we've had to replay the footage to, to, to get some facts a lot.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, Jerry, Jerry said or did or didn't say, but, um, the door's open at the select board.
Is there, similar to like our IBP email, is there something set up so that it can be an off, uh, uh, an offline communication process, so if someone doesn't wanna speak up?
Anybody has my email.
They do, okay.
I mean, we do have a select board email, um, we have a select board secretary that
Okay.
sorts through those, um, but I mean, anyone can email me at any given time.
So it sounds like, what I, it sounds like, again, I'm gonna, I'll reiterate it, I, I, I'm sorry if I sound like a broken record, but the folks that are vested in the town need to, need to continue to be that voice about if they're not happy with elected officials or appointed officials, then they need to speak with those folks and say, listen, I've asked you to do this, can you help me? Now, there's, there's ways around it, but how can you remain vested within the town operation to ensure that their voice is being heard? And if it's not always being here to it, if you go in and say, I've asked this person fifteen times and every single time they said this, there's ways around that through the town that those people can maybe no longer be in that position. I'm not saying everyone gets fired and everyone gets voted out or anything like that, not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, the investment in the town continues on every hour. It's, and, and you're saying it, you're saying it perfectly, Andy, you're saying, I feel like I'm the only person that's vested in both sides, that's why I'm here, that's why I'm trying to be there.
And I don't, you're just me, but.
No, 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 I, I get that, right, but.
I'm hoping Andy, the rest of the select board aren't.
I know.
I mean, you said, I mean, only two faces, but I saw Linda one time, but.
And Linda's, she's on a public issue, she's had surgery.
Okay.
Like, she's, she's from here.
Okay.
And, and again, I get your point, but I, I, I have to just throw a little bit in there. I work every day.
Sure.
I worked all day today.
Yeah.
I came to the meeting tonight, um, I have, you know, if I have a select board meeting, I go to the select board meeting. If I have an ambulance meeting, I go to the ambulance meeting. If I have a Zoom meeting, like, I have a ton of meetings too.
Yeah.
And I have four kids and I have a wife and a family and a house and a job and a business. And sometimes, you know, if you wanna make a difference, everyone says, ah, I'm too busy, I don't have time to do that.
It takes a tiny bit to do that, sir.
It does. It takes a very, just give a little.
Yeah.
That's all we're asking for.
So, I also was in the military, you know?
Okay.
So, you know, I went to the Navy.
It's okay, I forgive you.
I was in the Marines.
We're all the same vote together, probably.
So, you know, I asked you a question earlier, I said, okay, you know, if you see somebody going, well, you don't, you don't usually give a citation or.
My primary.
Where, where do we start?
Yeah.
Okay, you let these people, they don't, we all have insurance, right?
Yeah.
We all have insurance on your vehicles? We have to have it.
Yes.
We're, we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
You, you gotta start issuing some tickets, man.
Yeah, well.
I'm not, because if, if you don't, what, what are you here for? Wait for the big one?
No, no, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, my, my goal to come out to Richford isn't for traffic enforcement. If I see a violation. It's, it's community involvement, it's getting out of the car and walking around, it's meeting people. I, I, I tell you truth, up until March, I didn't even know how to get to Richford.
I mean, I just wanna say, I'm, I just wanna say this.
Yeah.
And maybe this'll, you watch these cars go by and someone may even roadworthy.
Yeah.
To me, if that guy goes down 105 and kills one of my family members.
Yeah.
And I know you're down, I'm sorry, but you're responsible for this type of stuff.
Okay, so with that, with that, I know what you're saying and I hear your frustration with it, okay? But what I will say is, I am certainly not gonna ticket or arrest Richford out of this community project that we're trying to do here.
No, absolutely, we, no, we could do it.
So.
Have to start somewhere.
With, okay, so, I, I'm just gonna give you a hypothetical and we're getting way past whatever here, but I, I wanna finish this, okay? So if I see a car go by me, let's say it's a, it's a Sanford and Son special, okay? And I pull, and I pull it over.
We used to have one of that.
Okay? And I pull it over and the person in the car doesn't have a license, they don't have insurance, there's no registration on the car, and I write him three tickets, now what?
He's going to court.
I'm asking, he's going to court? Okay, he's gonna.
Well, he's either gonna pay his tickets.
Or.
Or he's gonna end up in court.
Well, that, that, that's not gonna happen either.
No?
Nope. Civil violations don't end up in a criminal situation. So if I write him a civil complaint, he has no license, he has no insurance, no registration, and I issue him a thousand dollars worth of fines, ten points in the license he doesn't already have, and I tow his car away. Where does that, where does that put me at that point?
Put you? Where does that put you?
The, the, the whole situation.
Where you've got one old junk car off the street that might hit a kid an hour later.
Okay.
And the guy is wondering, what am I gonna do now?
So I tow the car, local tow company, the guy goes, picks it up, now he has it again, and we do the same thing over next week.
Right.
But can he get his car back if he, before he pays his fines?
Yeah. There's no reason for him to let that out, I, I can't prevent him from getting his car.
And chances are, he can afford to get his car back more than he can afford to pay his tickets.
Right.
Okay, so it's a downward.
I'm not trying to say, I'm shirking my responsibility. What I'm trying to say is that, I'm, I'm, and, and I, and I know what you're saying and I get it, I get what you're saying, right? If I sit here and I hammer every car that goes in front of me, and the Title 23 violation book is an inch thick. Okay, Title 23 is motor vehicle law, it's an inch thick. All right, there's probably, on, on my police cruiser outside, there's probably a violation, who knows, right? But there's probably a violation. So if I see a violation, if I see a registration expired, I won't know if they have insurance or not, but if I see a registration expired or expired vehicle identification sticker, VIN, or, um, vehicle inspection sticker, I'll pull the car over. It's, but me issuing, I can issue a book of tickets right there, what does that, what does that accomplish for me?
Because when you pull a car over, you might find a whole bunch of stuff inside that car.
That, that, just curiosity alone for me being a police officer, that, I like talking to people. As you can tell, I like talking to folks. So pulling a car over and talking with them all day long. And I'll, I'll tell you, Trooper Farmer, who did the walk with me, I review her videos. It's part of our process, we review videos of our troopers. She had a motor vehicle stopped the other day, simple violation. Twenty-seven minutes later, I watched the entire thing. Twenty-seven minutes later, the person talked to us and gave us some fresh information about the entire area, not just Richford, that we didn't have before. Twenty-seven minutes of that person talking to us, we understand the value of community interaction, motor vehicle stops and that, we do.
But correct me if I'm wrong, like, I mean, I, I understand that, I'm not saying I don't. I'm not saying, you know, you have to, the only way we're gonna fix Richford is just keep writing these people tickets, because.
That's, yeah, there's no, that's not, I mean, if, if that was the case, I did traffic stops on the interstate on, uh, by Exit 15 Winuski for fifteen years. How many people can I get for doing eighty-five plus right now? I could write like ten tickets right there. And I've been doing some traffic enforcement for fifteen years in that one spot.
But correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
If, if you give me a ticket for doing eighty-five.
Yeah.
The next day, I'd probably drive a little slower. And, and I think what we're seeing is, um, if you don't, if, if nobody gives these people a ticket or even, even just stops them and says, hey, you can't do this, they're just, they just keep doing it and doing it and doing it and doing it.
They're thinking, ah, you're not gonna be, no, hey, I'm gonna keep doing it.
They, they feel like they're invincible or they're untouchable.
And they do, they absolutely do. There's nothing to happen.
You know, you're not giving them a ticket and I'll probably leave here tomorrow and get a ticket, but I'm okay with that. Pay the ticket.
What are you driving?
The one that really strikes me now is, is I, I've taught my kids, you, you don't walk down the street with a bottle of beer. You just don't do.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and here we are, we're not gonna do nothing to them, so it's like, where do we start?
That's right, where do we start?
To get up here, you've gotta start down here.
And when I was a kid, it seems like you, you, you had to get in trouble to learn that, okay, you're gonna get in trouble.
Okay.
Okay? I, I, I did a lot of stupid things when I was a kid.
Yeah.
But after you get in trouble a couple of times, you start to learn like, okay, there actually is a law. There, this isn't a joke, um, I can't just do whatever I wanna do whenever I wanna do it and I have to obey by these laws and, I don't know, I feel like I, I, hopefully my parents did a good job. I feel like I'm a decent citizen.
Yeah.
I, I don't know where, I don't know how else to start with these people. I mean, as a community, we can't all go hold their hand and say, let's just all be, you know, we're gonna make this community great. You know, we're gonna make this community great. They don't wanna be part of our community.
So here's, if that, that, what, what everyone is saying. Is probably better saying than I can describe what we're trying to do here, okay? The judicial system, the civil court system, they're a piece of this puzzle as well. We're trying to be the liaison between that system and the people that are causing the crime here. We're not saying we're not, we're gonna turn a blind eye to that. That's not what we're saying at all. That's the piece of this entire puzzle that we can help bring to this, to this. Okay, but it's a piece. I can't, and I, I'm, I'm not saying it over again to convince you, I'm just saying again. Issuing a book of citations for arrest and issuing a book of tickets is a piece, but it's not the end all be all here. The other part of all that is what we're trying to build right here. Okay, the, the, it's gotta be a totality of everything. And that's why we're trying to say, Lieutenant Partner's trying to say is, we don't wanna come in to Richford. And say, you must do this, this, and this. What we're trying to say is, we wanna be a part of whatever it is that this group creates. And knowing who our neighbors are, knowing that we're comfortable enough to walk down the street when we wanna walk down the street. Knowing that the person driving down the jalopy heading out of his driveway like, crap, I am gonna get pulled over here. I know it. I'm not gonna do it. It's, we're gonna see results. And what do those, what do we, when we see them, I don't know. What are our goals? We can have lofty goals. Everyone holds hands and has a great time and, you know, and we can have immediate goals, next week. But who else can we bring in here? So we can start spreading this word because the two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty. The twenty-two people in here right now.
It's less than last week. We, we, you guys keep telling us the same thing every week.
Yep.
And, I mean, we can't force people to come.
I know.
That's one percent.
We can't force people to come, like.
That's one percent of our population.
Question in the back.
I have kind of like more of a comment. So, you know, when. Like you said, when you come in town, everybody knows that you're here, right? So everybody's scattered.
Yes.
So what I'm thinking too is like you said in Tunbridge, or Lieutenant Martin said in Tunbridge, the town got signs and put signs up, right? So maybe just us in here know about the pamphlets and the signs and the emails that are being sent out. And I know that we put it on Facebook and stuff, and sometimes people scroll and read whatever. So how about, let's see about getting some signs made up and putting them all over town, but like not signs, paper signs. Well, we can do paper signs too, but like maybe getting some signs made up. We've got some signs, we got a sign shop in town, right? See if they wanna donate, or maybe we can have, I don't know, car wash, a bake sale, pumpkin carving contest, something. And get those signs up, because those signs can be anywhere in this town and anyone can see that. So maybe. Melinda doesn't know what to do, but all of a sudden she sees the sign, these different signs up around the town, and she starts calling. And not only that, if people start calling and, and the people who are in town who are doing the legal criminal activity see. The signs up, oh, sorry. I was gonna try not to clear it, I did. That there's signs up all over the place, you know, people are taking action on this stuff. Like I think those people need to see that. The, look, this is here to stay and we're gonna make a difference. So we need to like, we need to do something. So I know that we talk a lot in these meetings, but I think that we need like an action step to have for next week. So if somebody wants to volunteer to call. Like the sign shop in Richford, or someplace else to see like how much these signs were made. Maybe, um, I've got pictures of what Tunbridge did. If you guys wanna see those, like maybe we can do something specific to Richford. On those. I just think that we did an action item to start somewhere.
Absolutely, because I feel like we come to every meeting and we.
That's what I'm hoping, right. That's what, that's what I'm hoping to get out of here. So what, so we got, we got a scribe, so we're starting in the right direction. What can we plan for next Thursday meeting? Where do we wanna be? And it's, and I, I can tell you, I don't have the answers in here. I don't have the answers. Okay, we're gonna come up with the answers together. All right, then we're all gonna come up with.
So right here, Laura said that she's gonna contact him, Tammy.
You got that, Andy?
I'm on it. All right.
And then Andy, I can email or show you what I found for, for signs and maybe. Like we can set up a meeting beforehand with whoever wants to come up. We can set a time and date like a, like a subcommittee before they come back next Thursday. And we can say, hey, we've come with a sign. I don't know if we wanna, we wanna pick a sign, show a sign. Everybody have input on the sign, whatever. You know, we just start going with it.
I actually just ordered the, um.
ATV signs?
The ATV signs. And I, I actually got them through, um, I think they're gonna take a couple of weeks to come, but I ordered them through the jail. For municipality, you can get them like.
Okay.
I know it's taking away from local business, but they're a third of the money.
We need to have, we need to have the buy-in from the community first and foremost. Everyone needs to be on the same page. And what, what we're trying to say, and I'm trying to convince you. I see you over there. But we're trying to get the, we're trying to get the buy-in from the community. And there's no silver bullet. There's no golden BB. There's no like, if we just do this, and I'm not trying to keep it secret and have you come up with your stuff. I don't know what the answer is either. Okay, but collectively, as a, as one unit, we're gonna come up with goals and direction that we wanna go. It's not gonna be by next week.
Even just.
Everything is fixed. It's not gonna be that way. But what we're gonna start doing is have incremental steps to get the community a better place, so your kids can be outside. The people are, the people that are, are here on the temporary basis in and out that are doing the, the crimes here. They're not gonna feel safe. They're not gonna feel safe in their community. You're gonna flip the script on them. Okay, that's what we're, that's what we're hoping to do. It's not overnight. Richford didn't get to where it was overnight. You said it was about ten years ago it started? Right? Ten, fifteen years ago? It didn't happen overnight. From this wholesome community where everybody knew everybody, no one dared to step out of line because they knew that their folks expected that parent to square them away and they did. So in, in order for us to get back to that, it's gonna take some time. We wanna let you know. That we, the state police, St. Albans Barracks troopers, are committed to their piece of this puzzle. Okay, and the only way that you're gonna believe it is if you see it from us. All right, eventually you're not gonna hear me stand up here and talk all day in the whole meeting. Some of you folks will be up here doing that.
Instead of, uh, I, I, I'm just gonna chime in on this sign thing. I think it's, it's a great idea. Um, what if? So, okay, like Sherry at your store, could we put one on your door? Could we put one outside the door where people come in? Is that like?
I would put one out there.
Does that lead them to do that? I mean, could we just put one, could we go to the Dollar General and everybody buy a poster board if there's twenty of us here? If we make tens, if, if fifty percent of us make a sign and just go put them out somewheres. I mean, that might be, you know, rather than spend, uh, three hundred dollars on signs for the first week. And then, who knows? If we see, if next week there's thirty-five people here, we might say, well, the signs are working. Let's do some more signs, you know?
I'd like to see it.
I, I, I would say that that's a good solution, or that's a good start, Andy, but if we don't have something permanent, then that means we're not vested in this project. And I think that, or.
So would you say.
I think that we wanna be vested, so that's a permanent, you know what I mean? We can start with the signs.
One permanent sign and then ten, like?
I would do more than one, because you want them, you kinda want them all over, but we could do, you know, put a whole bunch in the parks, but I can tell you what. That those, those people that see that, they're gonna take it down.
Yes.
And you don't have a per, you have a permanent sign, it's gonna stay there.
No, but I'm talking about, like, on the doors, when, like, I go to Vista and I go shopping. I wanna see something there. I mean, I think that's where we're gonna get the people. I'm totally cool with doing.
But those are the people that go to the store. But you want the people who, the, the people who are the criminals in the town, you want them to see them. Because you want them to see, hey, oh, what, what's going on here?
Yep.
Why are all these signs being pulled out?
Right center of town for sure.
I would do at least three, one at each park.
Andy, I have a question. You said you can't do anything about them drinking on the street, walking down the street drinking. What can we?
If it's, if it's.
Anything we can do as a town?
If, if someone, if someone is walking down the street, and the only thing they're doing is drinking an alcoholic beverage. Nothing else. They're just walking from the store down to their residence. That's not a crime.
No, they're, they're sitting on the stoop.
They're sitting right there.
Right, you're drinking all containers, leaving their garbage. No, I mean.
Okay, so now, now you're getting, now you're getting the littering, right? Now they're littering. Now they're littering, if they're leaving their garbage everywhere.
Yeah.
But if they're loitering, if they're loitering around on a, on a public space, I, that's, that's okay. If there's no sign that says you can't loiter here, as a town ordinance, no loitering on these steps. Okay?
And open container.
Open container, uh, I don't know that, I haven't read that one. We, we have.
I'm almost fifty years old and I always thought that was a law.
Open containers.
No, that's, no, that's, um, yeah, it's not a, it's not a crim, it's not a Title thirteen criminal law violation. Yeah. If that's the only thing they're doing, that's, that's not a crime.
But, but it is, but it is a crime in our community because we have an ordinance saying that you, that you cannot.
Can you email, can you email it to me, Andy?
I will work on it.
Okay.
I, I, I didn't write the ordinance.
Go downstairs right now.
That's what I'm asking. If there is an ordinance, then what, what can be done about it?
It is a public record, but it's a matter of putting your fingers on it. That ordinance might have been written.
Right there, a scribble ticket.
It's a civil, it's a civil violation. An ordinance violation is a civil violation. It's a, that's a, an ordinance is a civil violation. It's not criminal. They're gonna get a ticket to pay a fine.
And then are they gonna pay the fine?
That's what the, that's, how, how it gets collected, that's beyond me. I can issue the ticket, no. Uh, civil, a civil violation, we get issued a, a, like a traffic ticket. It's not, it's not gonna be a criminal offense where they get arrested or cited into court or anything like that.
So you've been around the area a little bit.
Little bit.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask you this question.
Yep.
On a scale of one to ten, how is Richford right in drug activity?
I hear it. I hear it.
Because we, we haven't even touched base on this yet.
No, I know.
And I think this is the biggest issue in town.
Okay, so when I, I asked earlier, and then one of the biggest ones was walking down the street. So we talked about, now we're talking about drugs. We're way past talking about drugs. So can you put that on the notes for next week, drugs?
Yep.
Okay. But, thank you, Andy. Um. It's, I have heard things. I haven't seen them. But I've interacted with people here that are involved in drug activity. That, that I'd be known. Okay, um. We hear things. This cop, this person had approached me outside just a little while ago before I came in. I wasn't even, who's, who's parked in front of me? Who did I park behind? I was there for twenty seconds. And they came up to me and said, hey. But I'm not a rat, and he takes off, right? So we, we'll get that type of information, okay? And that's great. Well, what, what's that person up to? Ah, the white stuff, you know?
Yeah.
So we get the information like that. And that's what I hear.
I mean, there's been a few times I worked for a local utility and.
Okay.
Down at our substation, my guys have told me, you know, they have some gloves and a soda bottle, put them in.
Put a needle in there, pick a needle up, yep. Yep, that's in every community.
I've, I've seen pictures, people walking around here with like a tunnel.
Sure, that's in every, that's, unfortunately, that's in every community.
That's what we're looking for for our kids. My daughter works down here at the local supermarket.
Yep.
We were busy the other day, so we couldn't pick her up. She walked home. She witnessed a fight on the street.
She does. She's, she's gonna be seventeen in November, and she's afraid to walk.
I don't.
The bar house right here in the village.
Yep.
You know, I don't want her walking. If it was eight o'clock in the morning, I'd feel okay, because they're probably still in bed. Um, but, you know, eight o'clock tonight, no, we'll, we'll go get you. No problem.
Yep.
Um, when I was a kid, there was only a handful of us out, like, you know, walking around.
Yeah, you got one when the streetlights came on, right? That's, that's what we did, right? So that, uh, listen, honestly, driving up here, having never, I remember Rich was, I started working in St. Albans back in March, okay? Driving up here, this is, this is a cool little town. I like this town. I like driving through it. The little bridge at the end, this is, that's cool. I, I, I just think it's a, this, when you think of like Vermont description, if someone were to describe it, you can think of a town like Richford. You got some farming, you got some folks that have been here forever, okay? Not to say that there are folks here that are, maybe they're the people that aren't invested in the community because they're only here for a year or less, right? And you're facing some of the same problems that many other communities are facing, which is why this project has been. Played out in several different towns. Rural towns. And Tunbridge is pretty rural. Cavett. Okay, so you're not alone in this, but we understand that we can play a part in this, and we want. We want to be invested in your community and help you guys get back to the work point where your daughter can walk home from the supermarket after a shift. And you don't have a care about that, okay? Where we play that role, we need, we need you to tell us how we fit into that piece. I can't come in and tell you where I'm gonna fit in your puzzle. You need to tell us. And this is what this community parts are all about. I don't have all your answers. Okay? But I want, I, I want to be able to be helpful where I can. We all do. Two more questions and then we get her back. Sir.
So if you wanna help fit into this community.
Yeah.
And we want a better community.
Yep.
You have that uniform out on the street. You got power. So there's three guys out here on the sidewalk tomorrow morning at ten thirty.
Mm-hmm.
They're not working. They're throwing their cigarette butts out. You drive by, you see them. You pull over, you walk up to them friendly, and you say, how's it going, guys? Where do you guys work? What's going on? You see what they got to say.
Yeah.
See what you got to say.
I've done that. I've walked the streets.
The women are home with the kids, a lot of them are, they can't work. But the guys are like crazy.
Yep, I, I, I don't know if you've missed that part of the meeting, but I, I've done foot patrols in this town.
Man.
Yep.
And what is, what's going on? What are you doing? What are you finding?
Um, some people are more, uh, excited about us being here than others. And, um, we get a lot of the, I, I, as I explained to the group earlier, I have no more than a half an hour out of town. I got a call about. The troopers in town, um, were being told that I was a rat. And I said, no, that's not the, that's okay. I was actually the trooper and I don't even, I don't even know who you are. So. It's not, again, one, you know, visiting the street, that, that's a piece. I agree with it. And, and I don't, I don't mind parking somewhere and walking around. Sitting in the park and walking around. I don't mind that at all, because I like talking to people. I've gone way over than I should because I talk too much, but. Um, but I agree with you. Having conversation with folks, but.
Trying to make these guys.
If they turn, if they turn and walk away from me, there's nothing I can do about it. No, you know?
On an average, how many hours are you in Richford a week?
Me personally?
No, me personally, specifically.
Um, I couldn't, I couldn't.
Like a.
Tell you. Um, it's really hard to tell, right? Because we have, we have contracts with, um, Stone Garden. Where we have, but right now we have a trooper that's working with Border Patrol and Stone Garden. They're driving around right now. We have a trooper that's assigned to East Patrol, so I don't know if he's in Richford or Ennisburg or Montgomery. I don't know. So it's hard for me to say. I, I, I couldn't even garner a guess.
Can you find, can you find out?
Um, you know what? It'd be really difficult. I, I could, I could do an informal, like. Yeah, I, I could do an informal to the troops and be like, hey, how much time were you in Richford? I could ask them and they could say, well.
The guy's on the street, probably.
Couple hours. Yeah, the person up the street that texts every time I come in the town, who, but, um. But, yeah, I, I, I honestly, I, I couldn't tell you and I don't know because a troop can drive from Ennisburg to Mon, to Montgomery to here, to there, to there. I don't know.
So they could only be here an hour a week.
Could, could be an hour a week. It could be twenty hours a week. It could be five hours a day. I, I, I really couldn't tell you the answer. I, I don't know. I, I got one question here. You can patiently raise your hand if you'd like us to move over.
So I, I, I have worked with the police and quite a bit of things going on in town in hopes to make it better. I don't brag about it. I would consider myself a snitch. I don't care. Uh, I, I work with elementary school. I'm a behavior specialist, and so I work with the kids. It's not all the poor kids that are, that are struggling in school. It's a lot of kids that are struggling in school. What I see is the problem is, is not so much the poor people, it's the repeat offenders. Like not for the, draw, driving is a significant danger. If they're not insured and stuff like that. What I'm tired of is, is, this is a personal thing. Five felony counts is something that happened to me and my family. Five felony counts, I went to court for. They had all the evidence to charge for five felony counts. They got it knocked down to one misdemeanor, even though they threatened my family with their life, so I had to send them to their in-laws in Berkshire. And so I'm at my house calling the police, and it took two hours and forty-five minutes for me to get here, but my buddy got here from Milton. And we were armed for World War III because there was active people driving by my house with guns. And I am a Second Amendment supporter, down through constitutional to my bone. But God forbid that I have to live in a town where somebody has been arrested seventeen times. Cause three felony charge accounts to them, they're driving by my house with a gun aiming it at my house. And I have to wait for my buddy to leave his work site in Milton to come to my house to help me protect it. That's why I'm angry. And I'm also angry because the same thing, my son works down the street. He's walking home. I'm glad, I'm tired of him handling himself. Time to respect people, to do the right thing. He's a teenager, he's gonna screw up. We all have them when we're kids. But you know what? He's walking home and the same person that's been arrested five times in this last year. For, for theft, for assault, for drugs, is threatening my son, walking home, gonna jump him and steal his ear pods that he worked for. Or, or we, we bought from him. It doesn't matter. Just the fact that he's gonna walk home.
Yep.
And so I am, by, by all means, I'm, I'm like, protect yourself. But if you have to, you end it. Because we can't keep living like this where he's gonna get arrested and he's gonna get right back out a week later, because next time he's gonna have a knife. And then after that, the next time he's gonna have a gun. The next time after that, he's gonna wait to catch him after, and that's why I'm frustrated. Because I'm working my best and my hardest to try to change these kids at school and help them live the most successful life that they can. But the problem is, is that they see that their parents, many of them are, are parents. The judicial system is broken. And I went there and I spoke to the judge about this, and I had to be a witness. And it was photographic evidence, admitted, all this stuff. And not five felony counts down to one misdemeanor. Five, and I said, this isn't, this isn't justice. Justice is when you, when you, you take ownership of your crime and fix it. Justice isn't getting away with murder. You know what I mean? Because it put me in a position where I would have been arrested. If he took one step onto my property, you know good and well, I would have been arrested. My house would have been cleared. Me and my buddy, who are law-abiding citizens, are doing everything to try to keep our community healthy and safe. But I would have been arrested, and this, this person, if he survived the incident, would not go to jail. It would be back down on the street doing his thing.
Okay.
And I, I support you. Trust me.
Oh, listen, I'm not.
One of my best friends is a Burlington, Burlington police.
Yeah, look, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking offense to it. This is, this is.
I, I appreciate.
Right, this is, this is passion, okay?
Yeah, and so I, and so the police are like, we arrested this guy five times, like six months.
So.
Now what? It's not you guys. I don't put the blame on you.
It may, this may sound, this may sound like I'm dismissive, but I'm not. I'm trusting, okay? Is there any type of restorative justice program here in Richford or this, this side of town?
No.
No. In the school there is, the school is pretty strong. It's very strong.
Restorative justice system? So if someone can, someone commits like a misdemeanor, say they commit, say they commit a simple assault. Say I got, say I got two people. In a, in a mutual affray of some sort. They both punch each other. That's it. Okay, they're, they're both fighting. They show up, they both punch each other. Someone said something to him, you're not a tough guy, prove it. So the other guy proves it and he punches them back, right? So we have kind of a mutual affray. But someone's gonna get charged with a misdemeanor, simple assault, that was unwithstood by a law enforcement officer. So that's a crime. Give him a citation. You come into court. Come in, fingerprints, photograph. You go in front of the court or do your thing, right? There's systems that are set up, certainly in Chippney County, where. There's systems that are set up, certainly in Chitney County, where they go to a restorative justice panel. So community members are involved in this process.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure people know. So Franklin Grant has a restorative justice center at one twenty Main Street in St. Albans. So that's where they're located, but they serve Franklin and Grand Isle County. So they have those panels. They have the diversion programs, they've got the, uh, community panels. And actually, as of today, they reached out because they're in desperate need of volunteers, and people especially, like, I'm, I'm listening to you, and it's like, oh my God, we need this voice. So there is a restorative justice center, Franklin Grant at one twenty...
So perfect. So what this, what this restorative justice panel does? Okay, they hold the person accountable. vested members of the community are there, they can voice their, they can voice their concern. It's not gonna be a meeting this size, but it'll be people that are directly involved in it. Usually, the law enforcement officer is there as part of what they have to do for this issue to be taken care of. If they complete restorative justice, the case goes away. They don't have a criminal record. Okay? If they don't commit, they don't complete restorative justice, it gets sent down to the state's attorney's office for prosecution with normal. Okay? My hope would be that if this restorative justice system was utilized more, that person doesn't get the five felonies. Maybe we pick them up for that misdemeanor, and they get through the restorative justice system. We, we were just talking about a success story in the back. Person involved in drug activity. You know, we've all seen cops, the front door comes down, hut, 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 right? Guy gets scooped up in the warrant. He was offered opportunities to make himself better. He took, he took them. They weren't easy. He had to work for them. And now he's a successful speaker, gets the stuff that he was taking, that he was doing to cause us to kick his front door down. Okay? So, I would like to talk more about that restorative justice system. Add, add that as part of our solutions here. Okay, so you have the person that's out front committing the civil crime of ordinance violation of a open container, or loitering. And then, we're not necessarily hanging these people with a criminal record, but we're also trying to help them avoid the jail system, but they're being held accountable. Okay, I'm gonna leave it at that, because we went, my lieutenant said, hour, we're an hour and forty.
I know, like, a minute before the call.
Okay, just one, just one second, is, this is gonna be next Thursday. We talked about the signs. Again, I'm gonna tell you the same thing you heard before. Try to get somebody else here, I heard these numbers are going the wrong direction. Just try to get somebody else here, these signs around town, spreading the word, and help us be a part of, of a successful community. That's what it is. I can't keep telling you, I don't have the answers. I can see where it is that we can make ourselves better as an agency, where we fit in better to your plan. But it's gonna take, it's gonna take the entire, it's gonna take more than us, than the twenty-two in here. That's one percent, right?
Yeah.
Okay?
So we think we need, um, so cardboard, poster board, signs, uh, some of the store locations.
Well, I would work more, uh, we'll, we'll talk about getting like the official signs printed up, right? The ones that have all the fancy lettering and wording and numbers, but you gotta have, um, the word's gonna be everywhere. Because you know what? You put ten ti, ten signs up in the park, you staple them to the board, tape them to the board. Ten up, ten are coming down.
No, no, no. You're missing my point.
I am.
So, I'm not, I'm not gonna make ten signs this week with markers, okay? There's twenty people in here. Somebody in this room can say, I'll make a sign and put it at Vista. I'll make a sign and put it at Dollar General.
Okay, do we have that?
I'll make one, put it at Jolly.
How about if you do a printer and put, print it, and then just...
Okay. Then listen up. But what do we want them to say?
Hey, Andy.
That's the important part.
We can have some downer if you want.
Yeah, I know, but if she, oh, okay, she, you're gonna make them?
She, actually, she, yeah, she's got the template, she's already got a template of what we used before. It's just a matter of changing the phone number. So we can, we can, we'll connect here?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
So, listen, I like the passion, okay? Um, you folks are on the right track. The more buy-in that you have in the community, the better the result. I wanna stress that. We are, we are committed to helping the community get better. What that looks like, we'll learn as we go along. Okay, it may be that I ticket a hundred people in the front. It may be that, at first, but it's not gonna... No, 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 I'm, I'm following you right now. So with that, I'm gonna close. Hopefully I can make next week's meeting. If not, Lieutenant Pardon will be back here. But we wanna continue this on, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have up here...